Question about Buckingham's response to the crisis in Ukraine. We do have a public session for fifteen minutes at the beginning and I've got at least two people wishing to speak. So can we start with Derek Carpent?
That's me. Good evening, everybody. Just simply, I want to help on to do something. I think in general terms, what we need to do, hosts like myself, because I think I shall be a host, and the guests, they each need a separate network to support. And I'm sure you've all thought about everybody's nodding, so probably does the same thing. So I'll be looking to that network and that network could take us to places like the community centre, the Mayton Morton Village Hall, any place where the guests will be able to meet up without sort of help etc. So that's such a big general point I'd make. Am I doing anything? Well, yes, trying. I sent a letter to somebody who's in Poland, a lady who is forty, she has a daughter. She said that they are Ukrainian, she has a daughter and her mother. So the lady's actually with her, so it'd be quite a good liaison if everything else fits, then it'll be okay. I've been finding out from my sons today, some of the systems are not up and running that easy, you know, to get in. So he's actually doing a trial run himself, then he helped the old boy to the IT, you know. So that's about it. So what we hope is, once I get the documents to fit in, the lady at the other end's got her documents, they're somehow married up, yes. That's a good family, the lost lives, I'm a good guy, I'm clean, and it all links up. And who knows, they could be with us in a short while, but of course, there are thousands to be done. So that's me.
Thank you very much, Derek. That's an encouraging response from one member of the public. Thank you very much. And Tim, would you like to speak?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and many of you I know already. I'm here both as a member of the public and as a local church leader. And I mean, I think it's very heartening, we all feel that, the number of expressions and offers of support that there are at this time in the Ukrainian crisis. I think there's a certain extent, and maybe your thoughts echo that, but we're not quite sure what to do next. And for those of us like myself and my wife who have expressed interest in hosting refugees but have no particular links, we're asking the question of how we kind of connect up with people. And yes, we are registered in other places. I would also say that with all these different pockets of support that are emerging around the town, it's how do these together get joined up? And the question I have, and you may or may not know the answer, is ultimately, who takes responsibility for doing this? Who joins up the different things, or is it just going to be a kind of scattergag approach of lots of little networks that develop, but without necessarily cohering together with each other? So that's kind of me as an individual, as a church leader, albeit of a building that has its limitations, I would want to say that, you know, we would like to use that in whatever way is appropriate. There will be other community facilities as well that can be used possibly for some of the meeting that might be necessary. Different ideas will emerge, I think, as we see what is the extent of the people coming over here. But one thinks of, yes, the need for a place to socialise, I would think perhaps, people needing to express their faith through worship, and Ukraine is, I think, eighty-four per cent orthodox in its background, but many others are Christians and other groups are more a minority. So there may be space, the need for places to worship. But also, teaching English, for example, is one that springs to mind very quickly. So I want to say that Well Street United Church will help in whatever way we can with local premises. And I, in faith, offer those in the church, not knowing who they are, but in your expectation, there are those who will want to help in this, as I'm sure there are those of other churches and many other members of the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
I'll say something, that's all. I'm Chief of Handly, and as some of you know, I run the community lunch every Tuesday in the parish church. Just running on from what Derek said, you know, a place to meet, we would be very happy to welcome, as you know, as many Ukrainians, Arabs in the town, and offer that as a place on Tuesday to come and lunch and meet up and lead all of the community. And on April the fifth, we are doing a Ukrainian lunch, Ukrainian theme, we're going to decorate and we're going to have Ukrainian food. And just, and any surplus from that, we will donate to an appropriate fund, whichever that be.
Thank you very much. Excellent responses already. I'm conscious, there are two people on Zoom. I know councillor Cole maybe will speak later as part of our council meeting. Would you like to speak? The other person tuning in, I haven't got your name. Yeah, you're...
Do you mean me?
Yes.
Hi there. No, I'm...
Just listen.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
No, I was just joining in because I wanted to find out anything prior to, I've got a meetup with some people on Thursday in Lee's Pub in the New Inn in Buckingham Bridge Street to get together a whole load of people. I've got various, I'm not wording this very well. I've got people, I've got two women who either speak Russian or Latvian who are coming along. I've got somebody else who's coming along who's got connections with the embassies and the visas. Got somebody else coming from various churches. I've got some people who are involved in children's groups and helping children. And I was just wanting to find out some contact details and have like a list or a phone directory, say, of different people who can do different things within the community, so that any Ukrainians who come and stay in Buckingham can come into, I hope it's going to be Lee's Pub, and not just for this get together, and they could actually come in. Pardon?
We didn't, you carry on. I think there's just a little bit of interference, that's all.
Oh, right. And hopefully, we could have like a sort of open house in Lee's Pub whenever the date to be determined, the time, date and everything to be determined, where any of the people who've come and lived in Buckingham, Ukrainians, could come and have a warm welcome, have access to all these details, be it the police, doctors, hospitals, vets, council, local MP, all of the sort of information that you can glean from people that you know, but they won't know anyone, and have a cup of tea, warm welcome and a listening ear from anyone who's there, you know, perhaps some church ministers come along. Just, and I've got loads of people who've expressed a lot of interest in that, either volunteering to just make coffee or do whatever might be helpful. And it started out, it started out as just about four or five people meeting somewhere. And then the thread got so complicated on Facebook that I suggested that we met somewhere and Lee suggested, I don't know, I don't know any of these people, Lee suggested his pub. And next thing I know, I've been inundated with, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming, so.
That's fantastic.
Well, it's all a bit scary because I don't normally do that sort of thing.
That's fantastic. We've already heard from several members of the public who are obviously very proactive in their response to the current crisis, and that's really encouraging. Well done, everybody. You are very welcome to stay for the remainder of this meeting if you'd like to. It is a public meeting, so do stay online or stay here if you've got the time.
Thank you. I just had, if you've watched Tim say, and the lady, the star on the screen there, we've got a lot of skills and attitudes etc., but you probably thought, hang some sort of register. But just saying, you mentioned that people with a tendency to be good at languages or can teach. I'm a little bit good at languages, and I do have a favorite says, I can do it. Not that I can't do it, but I think it's important that we've got all these things around, I'm sure everywhere down the table or out in the street, as people there with, I don't want to say assets, I don't like to word very much, but whatever they've got.
Skill builds.
Yeah.
It's all sounding very encouraging. So thank you all very much for the contributions you've made tonight and for all that we anticipate that we'll all be doing in the next few months. So thank you. I think, unless anybody else from the public wanted to say anything, we'll move on to our agenda now.
Can I just ask one more thing?
Yeah, sorry.
Do we actually have any information about anyone who may or may not be coming over? Is there any firm detail yet?
Yeah. I mean, I think Derek's probably the closest to getting somebody because he's got a link, but I'm not aware of any refugees having, Ukrainian refugees having arrived already. I don't know if there are anybody else, please.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Is there any link from those who've registered on the government or on the sanctuary website to the towns where these people live?
The only thing I would say is Buckinghamshire Council has got a coordinating role and they're the ones that's receiving the government funding. So I, my understanding, but we've got at least two Buckinghamshire councillors here, and they'll correct me if I'm wrong, is that, is that they will, they will have an idea of how many people within Buckinghamshire have registered an interest to house a family, and then they will be placed accordingly. Thank you, councillor.
And just to say that this is a very serious and moving feast, what's going on. The chief executive, Rachel Shimmens, is, or chief executives in the country, talking to the LGA about how they best, the local authority, deal with this, because it's something that is unprecedented. And we have to respect the fact that there'd be many agencies involved in that, military and everybody else involved in it. These things have to go through a proper legal portal, which would be Buckinghamshire Council are going to be handed again the responsibility to do this. Chief Executive being the responsible officer for the council will lead on that. We here tonight, the decide, would be in a supporting role, in a subsidiary role, to support those actions. But we are not, and we are not the statutory authority. I can assure you that, I've had conversations, I respect how it has, we do all the time, and there is a will to try to do the right thing, but we have to be led by the speed that the government rolls things out, the information the government provide to the local authority. And I haven't had anything significant different to that since last week. And I know that we are waiting, apart from the fact that the government is going to pay three hundred and fifty pounds per household, but they haven't identified how they're going to pay that out. I presume that's going to go through the local authority and they're going to put money into Buckinghamshire Council, like other authorities, to actually do this. That means they've got to actually identify resources within the council to do that, and they've got to manage that and be assured that the government proportionately funds them for it. So it's not like individuals doing this, because individuals have to be, they're a safeguarding authority and they have to be sure that the people, if they have a person, goes to someone who has gone through nominal safeguarding. I do have worked in various things like that as a member of the local authority. And that isn't to criticise anyone, that is that the local authority has to behave in a proper and legal manner. And as much as we all want to do anything, we've just got to be a little bit cautious that we actually follow the correct procedures to ensure that we do good and no harm and that we respect those people when they come. And I cannot, on a personal note, I can't imagine what it's like to have come from a zone like that. And we can only imagine what's going through their heads. And I think probably just love and care is what they're looking for. And Buckingham, we're fortunate, we've got really lovely people, but we just need to be minded to that. I hope that helps, ma'am. And it just brings it back to the sense of where we need to be. I'm not talking as a town councillor, I'm talking as a Buckinghamshire councillor.
That's great.
In the meeting, I'll be talking as a town councillor.
Thank you, councillor Sachbri. And councillor Heatherington, then councillor Maudie.
I was just going to say, on the government website that you go to, Hunsford, Ukraine, as an individual with no connections to people there, amongst the questions there, it does ask all your photographs, so there is clearly some geographical analysis going on there.
Thank you. Councillor Maudie.
Well, the correct route for distribution of monies will be through the Buckinghamshire Council from the government. There has been experience in dealing with Afghan refugees, which were two families in Buckingham that should be looked after. What we've really got to be careful about, there are certain bodies, people set up as charities who are collecting money for Ukraine, which never goes anywhere near there. So if anyone wishes to donate to Ukraine, you must go through a registered body, such as the Dec. You know, the, it's been terrific to support that's happened. And rotaries are where you're giving money and helping through, but they give through rotaries rather than to individuals. We had, as you know, the twinning event over the weekend, we had a social on Saturday night, we raised a hundred and eighty-eight pounds for the Ukraine. The correct body for actually looking after and coordinating is actually the town council, I believe, because of the restrictions regarding confidentiality. I don't think you can, with the best word in the world, an individual have a database unless they're registered. So, and there is a need to coordinate, because we had some very good offers from Tim and other churches. But what we don't want is everything happening in one day and it can only go to one event. So be coordinated, I would suggest, with Paul's willing, that the proper organisation is the town council to do that, to coordinate where these people can go. Because the experience we had with the Afghans is simple things like TV licences or reaching for a doctor or where to buy food. I know in one case, certain individuals from Hong Kong and other places were left by the home office, not properly looked after. And because they didn't speak the language properly, they just didn't know who to turn to. So I would suggest a town council does a coordination and the aim is with anybody who wants to help, and I think everyone wants to help. We do need the premises. The money will go from Buckinghamshire Council to the families who host. But it's very easy to say, oh, well, we help everyone. The problem is you can get in a very difficult situation by not coordinating it properly, because these people have to be registered for medical services and help, and there has to be a procedure for that. And this is why we have to, and it is taking time for people to get the visas and so on. There's two Ukrainians who didn't come as a part of this problem, who are at the university. And the friends are helping with the costs of their visa applications, so they could stay in the country as students. And it's not an inconsiderable amount, they have to pay to do that. So there are lots of things going on, but we have to coordinate it and we have to do it properly.
Just lastly, I don't know, the money, the ten thousand pounds goes to Buckinghamshire.
We're drifting into agenda item three. I think if we can move forward in the proper way now, end the public session formally now and move on to our agenda, that will help, then all councillors can share any other information they've got. And if members of the public do want to speak again, if you raise your hand, we can suspend standing orders and enable that if you've got a particular response to something else that's been said, okay? Our councillors are happy with that, but we will do that if and when we need to. Thank you. So any apologies for absence?
Yes, councillor, I'll say both, and councillor Whiteboth have work commitments, and councillor Armand has a duty.
And councillor Colford.
Councillor Cole's on.
He's here, but not here.
Yeah. And any declarations of interest? Thank you. So we'll move on to item three, which is Ukrainian refugees. To receive and discuss a verbal update from the mayor, councillor Margaret Gaye and the town clerk. The town clerk has produced a written report, which obviously members of the public haven't heard. Would it be helpful to read that out?
If you wish, yes.
Do you want me to or do you not to do it?
Carry on, Margaret.
Okay, it's headed Ukraine Response. It's not very long, so bear with me. One, recommendations. It's recommended for officers and councillors to be fully involved in any discussions about responses to the situation and support for refugees. For the town clerk to provide free use of council premises where this is possible, following discussion with the mayor, where this would support planning for or provision of support for Ukrainian refugees up to the interim meeting of the council to be held on the ninth of May, twenty twenty-two, I'll put it on the screen. For up to four thousand pounds of the council's future planning budget, you know, it's heading there, to be used to fund immediate expenses to arrange for support for refugees if needed. And such funding decisions to be delegated to the town clerk to make a liaison with the mayor. For the town council to consider any further responses during the interim meeting of the council scheduled for the ninth of May, twenty twenty-two. And for members to consider any other appropriate responses. And the current response, a range of support has already been provided from Buckingham for those in Ukraine. This includes Buckingham University collaborating with the Buckingham School to collect and deliver two huge collections of items to the Ukrainian Association in Luton. The council has received a range of suggestions from residents for ways to support Ukrainian refugees who may come to the UK and particularly to Buckingham. There are clearly a significant number of residents looking to provide support to Ukrainians in the most appropriate ways. The Homes for Ukraine scheme, councillor Steve Bowles, Buckinghamshire Council's cabinet member for communities, has written to town and parish councils regarding the Homes for Ukraine scheme, and that letter is available as well. In addition, Buckinghamshire Council are working with other councils, the Local Government Association and the government to plan the various scenarios of the types and numbers of refugees who may require support. Buckinghamshire Council will look to coordinate potential accommodation, education, health, safeguarding and other issues. As soon as there is any information about potential refugees to be placed in or near Buckingham and any clarity about their likely needs, this will be shared as appropriate. And then the National Association of Local Councils has provided an update, which members of the council have read or have received. And the proposed approach, at the time of writing, it's too early to know how many refugees will need support and what that support might look like. For now, it's suggested that the council agrees to be supported and puts a mechanism in place to ensure the council can quickly respond to any needs that may become apparent. And I know that echoes what Joanna Ford is hoping to do. The feeling is we need to sort out some of these details now, so we're ready when refugees arrive. So that's really the purpose of this meeting this evening. I think the first person who wanted to speak is councillor Marky.
Thank you. We should, we should have learnt a lot of lessons from when the Afghan refugees came. My daughter lived in Newport Bagle, so they moved ten families into a hotel there. The Milton Keynes Council was supposed to be looking after them, but she got in touch with the manager and said, what are they desperate for? And what they're desperate for were toiletries and sanitaryware. So she phoned her dad, can I go and buy? She said, yeah, go and buy. She went to Tesco's, bought all the stuff and some colouring pencils and colouring books. And that's what she took to the hotel. And she said, Dad, can you fund it? Yes, I'll fund it, which I did. But it's the small details like those which are crucial, the toiletries and sanitaryware for the women and something for the children to do, and the rest can we can sort out. But immediate, immediate things is what we need to look at.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Willan.
I can agree with councillor Marky there. I think that the crucial details are what's going to be counted. From my experience and my work within the support sector for homeless people, is that sanitary products need to be accounted for and there needs to be a directory or a centre point where all those resources can be collected. I think that if we were to use maybe the community centre next door for taking some items which could be ordered to those families, and also updating the website possibly to include easier instructions for those who would like for maybe are considering taking on a Ukrainian refugee's family or couple of Ukrainian refugees. I definitely think that we should use the town council website in that capacity as an information hub.
A single point of contact, kind of.
Yes, yeah.
That would be very helpful. Thank you, councillor Willan. Councillor Sachbri, then councillor Shafer.
Yep, thank you, thank you, ma'am, ma'am. What's key in this is you will understand that the Buckinghamshire can receive ten thousand, five hundred pounds for the support of the refugees. Now, that is to cover things such as giving them extra support in education, to give them extra support in only counselling, only these sort of things aren't easy. It's not like have a go type stuff with this, because if you've seen what they've seen, it isn't. And if I was to say anything to do with it, I think the recommendations have been very well put together. If I was to add anything to it, I'd say that we should ask that, seek that an early meeting is undertaken probably with the town clerk and support of the mayor, in the way the recommendations have been made, to make sure that what we are doing is collegiate and reactive to what the league authority will be doing, which is receiving the funding from the government. What we don't want is to fail anybody, and we could fail people by not being joined together in our actions and then not being able to be proportionate in the way we do it. And I think that if I was to say anything, ma'am, I'd ask that we take that into consideration in the recommendations. And all these personal elements that we may bring to bear are really good. But we are dealing with people who have come from a war zone, they haven't come from a holiday place. And I only know from my brief conversations with people who have been in my grandfather's generation who were in a war zone, that being in a war zone is not a very good place to be. And you take a long time to mentally recover from that. And these people have been, thinking about what's going on at home as well as being here. So I do think if we could just agree that we would get that meeting so that when we get off the ground, all the support with the community is totally as one, then we don't find ourselves splintering into people doing things in good heart but not joined up, because if we don't join up, we will fail and we need to work together.
Thank you. I've got councillor Shafer, and I've got, I don't know which order, the councillor Cole and Joanna Ford wanting to speak as well. So I said councillor Shafer next. Lots of good thoughts already, but it has been mentioned before that there needs to be sort of a register of resources, not in the sense of what the Buckinghamshire Council provides, although... uh, the liaison with that is clearly also very important, but, uh, people who speak Ukrainian, for example, you know, if the, uh, and I would imagine, you know, our officers have already started thinking about that, but uh, if we could perhaps call for people to contact the town council if they have resources that might potentially help, such as speaking the language. I think that's going to be absolutely crucial because some of the people might assuming that people will be coming, some may speak English, but it is relatively unlikely that they'll speak, all of them will speak good English. Uh, I'm not sure that anybody around the table or in the, uh, council speaks Ukrainian, so, but then there may be some other things, you know, some liaison with, um, can we already find out from the Swan practice, for example, what the process would be for getting registered, uh, people registered? So, so that the information is there. As I said, uh, you know, you, um, you've probably thought about these already anyway, but it seems important. Thank you. Councillor Cole, then Joanna Ford, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm going to start off by saying this is very, very much a personal thing for us, the Ukraine problem. In nineteen twenty two, a hundred years ago this month, Alexandra's mother Natasha had to flee Russia. She was a white Russian. Her family had to escape the Bolsheviks and they sailed on one of the last sailings out of Arkhangelsk, landed at Newcastle. And she said that living and the reception they got at Newcastle shaped the rest of her life. And of course, her daughter finished up as mayoress of Buckingham in twenty nineteen, so. So this is very, very personal for us. And we want to do everything we can to help. And I hope members will wholeheartedly endorse those, certainly the first four recommendations on the sheet and consider other appropriate responses. I can't vote because I'm still getting over Covid and I'm, I'm doing this remotely, but please, please back up those four recommendations. It is so important. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cole. I wasn't aware of that personal issue, so. Jo- Joanna, hey, uh, Ford, please.
Yeah, just quickly, just quickly, because I.
For that too, yeah, anyway, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly because I realise that I'm encroaching on your, um, this isn't the public bit. Um, the lady in yellow, I'm afraid I don't know who you are. Um, you were saying about somebody who speaks the lingo. Um, I have got somebody coming on Thursday who I believe is Russian. And there's those, which is a start compared to English. Um, and also there's another lady who speaks Latvian. Um, and teaches children, I believe, in English. So there's quite a lot of potential contact there. Uh, and the other thing is, is there going to be any, um, availability of psychologists or councillors to these people when they arrive? Because they're going to be really traumatised.
Thank you, thank you, Joanna. That's, that's really helpful. Um, councillor Willan.
So then, um, there was another idea that, um, I'd like to put forward and I'd agree with all these recommendations as well. Um, is that we should be linking up some communities, not just within Buckingham Town, but say Milton Keynes, I know there's a, uh, fair, fairly large, um, Ukrainian population. And, you know, definitely linking out to those, uh, again, as I say, using the town council website and also the fine ideas of the one or four members of the public that have just come in and, um, have spoken about this. I think that we should be first and foremost, linking everyone together in one directory. Um, but also linking to other communities as well, which we can fall back on if we don't have that particular capacity.
Depending on how many families come to Buckingham. Thank you. Um, councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Madam. I wrote this earlier on today, um, I was in a debate, I'm going to get into it, but I just want to say this. I think the town council should absolutely do all this within our powers and budget for assist people fleeing the horrors and violence of war and persecution. For our university, our three associations and the everyday compassion of Buckingham people, we have a long history of reaching out and friendship and support through all people from across the world. Right now, seeing trainings would be this most than we should have. And we should have all refugees, whether they come from Afghanistan, the Everton, Syria, Myanmar, Libya or wherever. People that are running for their lives, running out of food and water, or running with prejudice for their sexuality or their policy. I'm honoured to be a part of a council that is against war, that is against hate, against abuse and for love, compassion, justice and peace. As a socialist, I only want to help build a sensible world, which everyone has dreams and ambitions and a way of all for Jbers. And therefore we must, as a council, help these Ukrainian refugees to find safety and solace. And through this, help them to begin to rebuild their shattered lives so that they can dream again. And then together we can dream of a peaceful, just, free and fair world.
Thank you, councillor Harvey. Wise words. Thank you. Councillor Markey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just going back to the, the language issue and, uh, I can only go by the experience of the Afghans when they were in a group. What the, what you have to do is get everybody a SIM card and a mobile phone. And then usually there's a person who speaks English. So if they cannot communicate, they can phone the person to translate on the phone. And that is the only, I, I'm going by experience on this one for the Afghan refugees in Newport Park. Uh, and it can be expanded to a, a wider, uh, problem. But a simple thing like that can solve so many problems. There usually is somebody in that group who can speak English. And in the, in the case of the Afghans refugees, there were several. And but each family was given a phone with a SIM card so they could communicate, if not directly, through a translator and back again.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councillor Ralph.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, already, uh, two has touched on one aspect, which is a social structure so people can get together and take comfort in meeting like-minded people. Could I suggest that we just neatly turn that on its head and say the people who are going to be hosts perhaps need a structure to help them come together. So as worries and thoughts and cares come to mind, they have the ability and capability to actually focus, uh, information to those groups.
Yeah, good thoughts. Thank you. Councillor Shaker, then councillor Don, if you. Okay, just picking up on the, um, earlier point about liaison with others. I wonder whether any of the parish councils in our vicinity are also having conversations like this and whether it would be worth finding out and coordinating, because this is clearly some, we're not going to have hundreds of people in every community. It's probably worth doing this on a slightly larger basis. Thank you. That's for Don.
Thank you. Um, picking up on what Anthony said, um, the, um, Shire Council and, um, just the founding members and the foster system, and they have, um, like foster support for families that are taking on a child. Because you can't just go into taking in, and somebody else's child if there's, you know, the age of four, it'd be quite difficult. Um, so the, the structure is set up there to support the family that's taking on a child. So I'd imagine the Shire Council might have something similar planned for the families, for the support for the people taking their families.
It's a valid point though, that does need to be clarified. And again, as I said earlier, these things need to be in place before people arrive so that people know and they feel supported. The council have a knock-on beneficial effect to the refugee families. Councillor Heatherington.
Again, going back to this Homes for Ukraine government, um, website, um, who would you like to offer accommodation to? Um, four choices, single adult, more than one adult or adults with children or no preference. There was no option to say, I'm just taking an orphan. So, um, that is being handled, so. Yes, and, and also it seems to me there's absolutely lots of good work going on and lots of good ideas. And it feels to me the key thing, um, that we as a town council should be doing is the coordination and being, um, repository of all of the information that people are.
A single point of contact perhaps. Um, councillor Stutchbury, then perhaps, I don't know if the town clerk wants to say anything.
I'd just kick off with some really good points. Um, and the point that councillor Andy Ralph said about turning it on its head, I think that's a saying point. The point that, um, actually Mari said about, um, using a SIM card to, um, coordinate the language is a really good point. It's about, um, um, how you do it. And, and pick it up on the points that councillor Don who said about the fact that these safeguarding issues, and this is, let's be quite clear, this is key. And, and, um, and let's not allude ourselves that there's a great dearth and of bounty of safeguarding in Buckinghamshire Council. It's not, um, it's not been a great scene there for a while. So, and we do need to tread very carefully and the pressures on the officers there is going to be great. They're already under pressure, period. So I think we need to get those done. And if I was to say anything about i- 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 it's regrettable, isn't it, if I make a point that we are in a point of doing visas in this country to have people come to this country, um, whenever people doubt we're in a different way. I think that's the wrong approach.
That's not for this council to do.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying what I think. I think I'm allowed to in law. Um, um, and when I'm not allowed to, then we will be in the same problem we have in Ukraine, I'm afraid. Um, so, um, I think that, you know, that's a regrettable situation to be in. We are where we are. We have to work within those parameters. And we do need to, as I said earlier, if we don't get niched in, as I hoped we would take forward, given the mayor and the and town clerk charged to niche into the decision-making in the local authority, which will cover the safeguarding, will hopefully cover the points that Anthony raised, Lisa raised and Andy raised. Because if we don't do that, um, when they do get here, um, we won't be prepared. And as I said earlier, we, we can't really fail these people if we're going to take it on. We need to be collegiate and responsive. And, and it's not going to be twenty minutes, is it? These people aren't going to be here for twenty minutes. And then suddenly the whole world will be put back together, um, you know, um, and it, this is about language to people. I, 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 I looked at, and councillor Shaker, and I listened at the weekend and a small event that we attended at the weekend, which was a much easier event, where there was two languages in the room, French and German. And I would bet that most of us in the room, including myself, are not fluent in either. And, um, Latvian and Russian are not the same as Ukrainian, I couldn't suggest. And if I was coming from a war zone, I might not want to listen to Russian at that particular point in time, if I was to be honest. Um, because there may be some natural resentment there, um, which hopefully in time will heal. So, um, as I say, with the point about, the one point which seemed to be questioned about the visas, I think we're doing all we can do. Um, um, but we are asked to follow national government guidance on this because they're suffering country, aren't we? And we have a democracy which we're fortunate to still have.
Thank you, councillor Stutchbury. And town clerk, if there's anything else.
Um, I suppose the things to highlight, obviously, Joanna, I'll come back to you and have an email conversation before Thursday about what we might offer. So it is clear before then, so we might have some forms we can put together, for example, in a database, and we can think about how to structure that beforehand. Um, the, I think the two, obviously, we, we have we don't have capacity in the office, but we will make capacity in the office and we'll shuffle stuff around to do that as needed, the website. Um, I think our two priorities, the recommendations are to crack on and do stuff as we need to do it and work with people and make those contacts and do things as fast as we can, but work as hard as we can to make sure we're working with Buckinghamshire Council and not missing anything. So I think especially working with Buckinghamshire Council in the next few days, we just need to make sure we've got all those right contacts and we're not failing to what I think you should do, but not doing anything that's overstepped and getting in the way of anybody else either. So I think that we might have a role as a conduit in some of that possibly. Um, so I think that that would be, they strongly is the priority that we need to pursue.
Thank you. Um, I think, um, Joanna, were you wanting to speak again? And are we happy for, no, okay. Oh, oh, councillor Harvey.
I think I'm about to propose what you were about to say.
To say, shall we do, agree, go through the recommendations and vote accordingly, okay?
Madam Mayor, with the amendment that we give you and the town clerk permission to go and do the conversation with Buckinghamshire Council, it isn't actually in the recommendation. I think we need to have a permission to do that so that you can do it. And I know you will do it anyway, but we need to mitigate so that it's agreed here, nobody can come away at a later point and send back conversations, which is what we're giving permission for.
Well, certainly not. In the first recommendation is for officers and councillors to be fully involved in any discussions about responses to the situations for refugees. We could just add, and that includes discussions with Buckinghamshire Council as the situation develops.
Agreed.
Those in favour?
Gentlemen.
Thank you. And the second recommendation is for town clerk to provide free use of council premises where this is possible, following discussion with the mayor, where this would support planning for or provision of support for Ukrainian refugees up to the interim meeting on the ninth of May.
Could I just ask a point of clarity on that? Um, when I say we agree in that, we own this entire building, are we including that in that? Because we own Layfield. And we have to have clarity on that. Uh, uh, I think because we may give this to council building, if we're agreeing it, it includes all our buildings, including this community centre. I think that's what we're agreeing. If that's what we're agreeing here, I'm happy to support that. What I don't want is a second conversation saying we can't do that because we own the building.
It does say where this is possible in that. So I think that covers the, because clearly there would have to be a discussion with the, uh, with the, um, the group that looks after the community centre. And I think that's implicit in in this particular recommendation where it says where this is possible. And clearly there will be bookings, but we, we would see that support for the Ukrainian refugees that come would get the high priority. Those in favour of that, Esha?
Gentlemen.
Thank you. And then the third one, for up to four thousand pounds of the council's future planning budget to be used to fund immediate expenses to arrange for support for refugees if needed. And such funding decisions to be delegated to the town clerk to make in liaison with the mayor. Councillors Stutchbury and then councillor.
Just, just can we add in there, if more resources are required, the mayor will bring it back to resources. So that we can actually, don't have to wait for another full council to agree then, then the chair of resources can um, bring that to an appropriate meeting. So we do need more resources. We don't have to wait a whole cycle of the council to actually find a few pounds if it's necessary.
Um, how can we work that sensibly?
That's just what I said, that if, if, it was quite sensibly, I thought, and I know you don't think it was, but quite sensibly, I thought, foreign council procedures. I know it's difficult for you, but, um, but you, um, you, you just move it to environment.
There's no need for that.
Councillor Harvey.
I, I don't think we can do that within our terms of reference. I think if necessary, to go beyond that limit that we're doing tonight, it would need another.
An emergency, yes. Yeah, that's always a possibility.
I don't think we can put that responsibility in front of the chair.
Hmm.
Um.
Councillor, I'm all due.
That's all. He's absolutely right. For our regulations, which we have to adhere to, and we can't have a regret what we feel, we cannot just put on the side. Um, there's a procedure we follow. Town clerk has certain powers which is spend money in conjunction with the chair of resources, and we will must abide by the existing regulations. It doesn't mean to say that we won't spend any money in the future. It just means that we have a procedure, we must adhere by that procedure.
Thank you.
Can I just say?
Just, just, just.
So the financial regulations do allow us to, do allow me to spend, I think, two and a half thousand spontaneously in an emergency.
That's right.
And, and then tell you what I've done afterwards.
Was it a nice holiday?
So, so we do, we do have that flexibility. And, and it's very unlikely will be a situation where we couldn't do something within three days. So I may well call a meeting, I was agreeing, an emergency meeting if we need to action something, and I'm sure you'll apply. So. So I I I I put in, I put in that amount as a recommendation, that's just less than half our contingent's budget for the coming year. So that seemed like a sensible balance to be able to do.
Are we ready to vote on that?
Yes, that's some clarity. Um, so what you're saying, town clerk, is that you believe that we can agree effectively six thousand pounds? Because if we needed to go up to that because of, I'm sorry, I I don't, I'm just worried that the four thousand pounds is insufficient. It's a, it's a reasonable amount of money. Um, you can commit more money at this instance and then you don't need to actually spend it. But but it would, it, I, when you're getting along and something's working, to then have to another meeting. While I was trying to suggest we went to resources um to discuss, which we can do for the chair of resources and yourself and the ma- and the mayor, as Howard said. And we can have a special meeting, just very clunky in these situations. Would it not be better to um set a larger figure in the first place? Um, um, no?
I'm happy with as as the recommendation stands.
Yeah. Can we vote on the recommendation as in our papers? Those in favour of that, please show.
I should have this.
Okay, thank you. And the the next recommendation is the town council to consider any further responses during the interim meeting of the council scheduled on the ninth of May.
Yeah.
So I'll bring it back to that. Those in favour? Thank you. And then the last one, the members to consider any other appropriate responses. Or I think we've had quite a discussion about that this evening, so those in favour of that, please show. So we'll have ongoing discussions about this, which is obviously a high priority at the moment. I haven't overlooked anybody on the screen, have I? Thank you. Okay, um. Councillor Ralph.
Um, I must have missed it, but I'm sure we reinstated standing orders before we started.
Um, technically councillor Anthony Ralph was absolutely correct. We didn't actually reinstate standing orders.
I'm sure I missed it.
So the whole decisions we made, they're allowed to do them all again. In the rush to get through, we didn't actually do it.
Can we just confirm then, we reinstated standing orders? Can we confirm that the vote that we took without doing that, for each, under each heading is still valid?
Thank you, madam mayor, yeah.
Thank you very much.
If somebody might come and I'm going to say what we agree with.
I I'm absolutely right. Standing orders aren't my strong point, as people know.
They're always there to be challenged. I'll challenge them at every point.
Thank you. Joanna, you wanted to have a word. Can we, allowing Joanna to speak? Oh, you're not going to be saying. And that, this, the next item is chairs announcements. I think the only thing I'd want to say is thank you everybody for coming, the members of the public and councillors, because this wasn't a scheduled meeting. And it does reflect the level of concern that people have about the current situation. Town clerk.
Just the other two things, maybe annual town meeting and resources.
So just mention them.
Oh, so so the annual town meeting Thursday uh in next door.
Yeah.
And also we do have resources meeting straight after this. So if people could leave in a civilized fashion, that'd be really helpful for those who have remained for longer.
The resources committee has confidential aspect to it, so we can't allow members of the public.
Um, for you, madam mayor, we haven't, there's a meeting on Thursday at which we've got an annual town meeting.
The meeting is half past one.
It's not, it's not crashing, so people can go to both. So yeah, because I was worried that we wouldn't have anybody there after a member of the public turned up. It's at one o'clock. So those who aren't working in full time employment will be out to ten.
Uh, is it possible to circulate this, uh, the details of that meeting on Thursday, please? Sorry, I missed that. Sorry.
So it's, so it's Thursday, there's a meeting at, so meeting at one thirty and the new in.
New in.
Yeah.
And then the annual town meeting at seven.
I know where the new in is.
Yeah, I know where the new in is as well, but it might still be helped. Knowing me, I might forget that it's one, whether it's one or one thirty or whatever, so.